Word searches. It's just full of really fun. This is one of the, probably the best projects I feel like we've ever done as far as just pure fun and enjoyment. We had some local artists. It's a husband-wife team. They're based in Springville, but the husband grew up in Orem and he was actually mentored by James Christensen. They live next door, and so that's how he ended up becoming an artist, was because of the influence of James Christensen. And so he was really happy to do this project with us, and we hope you enjoy it. We have lots of copies, so if you want to give some out to your grandkids or people that you know, we'd love to supply you with those, but Sydney included some coloring pencils in there for you, so if things get a little dull at any point, and he's in the meeting, feel free to start in on your coloring book.
Are there, is something that you can provide?
Yeah, we will eventually. So right now, the way you get one is by completing the library summer reading program. This is one of the prizes, so if you read, is it 10 hours, I think?
10 hours?
Something like that.
Five hours for toddlers.
Yeah, so if you, if you complete the reading challenge, you get one of these for free, and then we have a bunch of different plans for them going forward after the library's done.
So they're not available, I think, yeah, to just anyone until the summer reading program is done?
Yeah.
That won't look into that.
So August first, we'll start doing different things with them.
That's cool.
But yeah, really fun project.
You'll become a coveted item as far as, I mean, you start getting popular and absolute scarcity.
Yeah, and you know, the reason we wanted to do it is, you know, I feel, like this person, I feel like every kid deserves to believe that they grew up in the best town in the country, and this helps them connect with Orem history and what we're trying to do as a city. And it's fun for adults, too. There's some, there's some pretty good humor in here from the, from the artists. And yeah, I just hope you're really glad, because it was a lot of fun to do, so I hope, I hope you do enjoy it.
You told about the page of the Sarah?
Oh, yeah, and there's a, there's a, you'll get in here, there's a page of the Sarah that shows some famous people and some less famous people that you know that have been to the Sarah. So check that page out. You might recognize some familiar faces.
If you go on the Wikipedia and you look at all our notable people, Mr. Christensen is one of them.
That's right. That's right. And yeah, so this is, this has been really fun.
So we had a fake Jordan show up?
We did. Do you remember this story?
I don't, like, disappointed that I missed it.
So do you remember the Utah Flash?
I know.
Yeah.
So they, they had this promotion.
Oh, I do remember that.
Yeah, so they had Brian Russell there, and they said Michael Jordan was coming, and they're gonna replay the push off. And so they, during the day, they released different photos of this Michael Jordan at different places in town. He was at Mimi's Cafe, and from a certain angle and a long distance away, it really did look like Michael Jordan. But when they brought him out at halftime, he was about a foot too short and a little bit chubby. And so people just went crazy. It was sold out because they thought they were gonna get to see Michael Jordan, but it turned out it was fake Michael Jordan, so they weren't happy. So there's great stories like that in there, you know, just funny things that happen.
And Fred goes to seek it in, has Fred goes to made his way over to the city, oh yeah?
We haven't, we haven't seen him. But, you know, there's still a little bit left of the building, so maybe he'll make it over soon.
Now you can do some contests on social media, venues, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Just intermittently random, you know.
Yeah, one of the plans we have, if we can pull it off, is we want to create a vending machine out here where you can buy Orem swag, and this will be one of the things in the vending machine, is you get these coloring books.
I think we've already come up with some new fun ideas. There's a Orem event with like a sticker page, so we came up with things you could do at the events, and you can take a picture of it and then send it to us, and we'll mail you like the stickers, like that's with it, and we've already got like stickers that they've like put together so that we can make them for the future. So all of the city buildings that are in here will be made into stickers, all little characters.
And we, we bought the rights to the artwork, so anything in the book can be used for anything we want. Like, you know, if you want a, you know, a giant mural of something you see in the coloring book, but on the wall, we can do that. We do stickers, posters, really anything.
Contest.
Contests. So it's been really, really a great project.
Nice. Nice work, once again.
Thank you. This didn't even feel like work, this just felt like fun.
Here, let's move on to item 2.3.
You might want to add on to 2.4, Steve's still out there.
I was like, where's Steve?
Oh, 2.4 is the same thing. Oh, that has to buy.
So Diane's over there. Ryan can do 2.4.
Come on in, go. Yeah. Just passing around. So this may look familiar to you. This is the intersection of 400 East, 1600 North. This is the phase one of improvements that will be constructed at this intersection. This is about a $460,000 project. Originally in 2022, we signed an interlocal agreement with Utah County, which administers the MAGA money to do safety improvements there for about 1.3 million. At the time, we were looking at a roundabout project. Going through the public open house, getting input, the residents really would like a bridge, but we've got to find the funding for that, so that will be phase two. This will be phase one to get us through the time until we can build a bridge. This is about a 400, again, $460,000 project. The city will pay about 6.77% in a match, but a contractor on board, and so tonight we have a resolution before you to amend the agreement that we did in 2022 to reflect this project being built and the associated cost.
What is this project? Just painting the sides, what are we actually doing?
We are basically creating a more of a directional crosswalk system for those that use the trail. It will guide them to go through the darker pathway and make diagonal crossings not as advantageous, because there will be boulders in the way and other safety measures.
Those people will go on the street. Oh, yeah. I've known some of those people. So highlight. No, I never done it. To highlight the record, this is being recorded. Yeah, you've never done it.
... installed in order to get people to move more safely.
So, yeah, there'll be some physical block to ride your bike. You might get a walkover, but you're not gonna ride your bike directly.
Correct. This will make it very apparent where the trail goes and which way you should go. I mean, if this works.
We don't need it.
We might not need a bridge. But for now, we'll find out if it does. But it should be built here this year. Be ready to go. Pardon?
Do you know when they're starting?
I do not. Unfortunately, the two men that do, one's out on vacation, one's out on personal days, so.
Glad we have you.
Built, so.
So what is this required, discussion? What is, what is this?
It'll be on your consent agenda as a resolution, just to amend the agreement. And that was in the packet, it's very simple amendment.
Gotcha.
So, any other questions?
Okay. Just wanna say, really quick, thank you to, I mean, the little things that have been added all along this process to make that intersection safer. The flashing lights to let people know, to watch, you know, look this way, look that way, don't do this, don't do that, has been helpful, and so thank you for all of that in the process to make it better. We'll pass that along to Chris's staff that worked on that. Thanks, Sean.
All right, Gary, you might be up.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Steve's up also. In order to make everything work, so we'll go to item 2.5, do you rate?
Good.
And you can do the 15 minute version, so I'm pretty much.
Yeah, we could do the 15 minute version. So what we're gonna talk about in residential zones, we have some requirements on how high you can build a residential home, and it's 35 feet. State law also imposes on us certain restrictions.
Doesn't that vary by zoning, R8, R12, or different heights, aren't they?
No, in those zones, they can be the same. When you get higher, you could go up to 45 feet, and I think the R20?
R12.
Oh, 12 and 20.
Okay.
So you can go a little, little higher. 35 feet's pretty tall. What's left of the conference room over there is probably not 35 feet. Okay? And so I think a lot of you have been contacted about a house that is 35 feet tall, and it is affectionately called the shoebox that Shaquille O'Neal's shoes came in, has been built. And what we'd like to do is just go through a brief presentation that we've given the planning commission. We're looking at some things that we can do to possibly change our code and maybe deal with this type of situation in the future, but we are somewhat limited. So Jared, if you go ahead and come on up, and we'll have you hooked in, and we'll show you this presentation. And it is a flat-roofed home, and I'll give a little spoiler, state law prohibits us from regulating the pitch of a house. We can't tell people they can have flat roofs, we can't tell them they can have gables, we can't tell them what the pitch is, and so we're limited. We can't tell people what, what color they can paint their house in single-family homes and women's. So we're limited on some of those types of things. So we're bringing this up. What we've done is we've gone around town, and we, there's a few flat-roofed homes in town.
Can we regulate story?
We can regulate height, we probably could regulate story. There are many three-story homes above grade.
Yeah, there's, I don't see anything in, in code that would keep us from regulating numbers of stories. And we do that to a degree with, with the first requirement, which is a minimum. So we have a minimum. You can't build, whatever they built, the Pioneer Houses, that where you see just the foundation sticking up and then the front porch, not allowed. You gotta be at least eight feet above ground level or one story. So in that one way, we already do. To clarify, the, the 45 feet, that's true. The R12 and R20 zones do allow heights up to 45, but only for 20% of the total repair area. So the whole thing can't be 45, and then it requires a greater setback, 50 feet from property lines. So we already in those, in those other zones kind of start to do some of the things that we, we can talk about doing without regulating pitches and saying you have to have at least a, a 312 pitch, which is, was a typical minimum before the state took that ability away from, for cities to do.
Trying using the.
The other one? That is one of the strategies that we can talk about, that, you know, you think of 35-foot-tall shoe locks, and there's, it's just flat walls all the way around. We could probably reveal little, frankly, difficult, but I think we could do it, to figure out a regulatory scheme where as you go up to a certain height, you have a greater setback, so they need to be set back in more, think of like a wedding cake or a tier approach. And most people, even when they do go up that height, they don't just have that one solid mass. They do put some architectural relief, they add some further back. You'll see a lot of, frankly, 35-foot-tall, more modern architecture-type buildings that a lot of people look and go, yeah, I, you know, I like that, that's, that's good. We wouldn't want to prohibit that. And so this is an approach that is gonna take some time. We have been talking with the planning commission about it, we've been working on some things. We don't have any ideas, we're not here tonight to tell you, oh, here's a solution. We're here tonight to introduce this issue to you, because I would imagine some of you, if not all of you, have heard comments about this house. And the reality is, a lot of the state, this house came in for a building permit application in 2023. Since 2021, the state law has really restricted what we can do, and they call these things design elements. And apparently, our system does not like Jared.
No, it never has, not yet. Did yours come up?
How is it design elements? It's the construction, it's the outer wall of the house. You know what I mean? A design element is a facade.
Those kind of design elements, we, so like structural design elements, we could, we could regulate and say you have to have two planes in your front, the front-facing facade. Nothing they've written so far, I think, would, would keep us from doing that. We can regulate, for example, we can say you have to have a porch feature, but we can't say that the pitch of the porch has to be a certain pitch or a kind of roof or the materials used for it. But we can say that you have to have a porch. I'm just doing the wrong one. Okay? All right. Just going to do that. All right, well, let's, I'll run through these fast, okay? So the first, it's gone now? Okay. Windows P? I can, I'll leave it in the small screen format, how's that?
And our 15 minutes are up.
Hope you've enjoyed this presentation. That's why I'm without this now.
Gary and Jared, maybe what we can do to is, is have, we can send a follow-up email to this president.
We can do that.
We can do that. It actually is, it'd be great if anybody has more particular questions, you'll please let me know, come in, we'll sit down, we'll go through it, and really talk about what we're doing.
Is, is your future plan a host to modify our code of what's allowed?
We're hoping that we can come up with a good code amendment that will stay within the parameters state law has given us, but yet prevent the worst type of things from happening. But yet still give people, you know, the flexibility to really do what they want with their property.
While protecting the neighbors next door.
Sure.
And they maintain their property rights.
Yeah, that's the issue, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you can't just have your property rights and then blow up everybody else's. Sure. Do you want to run, do you have time or not? Because I can, I can send this up. I will go really fast. So you don't need to see, these are just examples of feature on homes that keeps people from hating, things like that. Again, we can't do pitches. This is another example of a really tall.
Is that 1600 south?
No, that, this is not in Orem. In the original slides that I did, I tried not to use pictures from homes in Orem to not, you know, drag that in. But here's a couple of other examples of just feature. We can't dictate these kinds of features, but we can encourage them in some ways, perhaps. We could look at other things that might help people do that, and we can require multiple planes or planes in the front facades, and an entry feature of some sort, which adds actually a lot. It says, when you see a porch on a house, it says "house." That is missing from that breadbox house, you know, it's, it's just not there. They might add it in the end, we don't know, but right now, it's a little shocking.
Aren't we allowed to say not more than X feet taller than the adjoining neighbors or not?
You would not be allowed to do that. Well, I should, in a historic district, you can do more. So when, when an area has been declared a historic district, you can do that kind of thing.
Do you do it for an R8 zone?
Not, not for the zoning, no. For regular zoning, no.
Historic district is a defined term, and we have to go in and designate areas as historic districts.
So just to, to clarify, we're talking about planes, that makes a big difference when there are multiple planes of, of feature on the front of a house. We might look at that kind of thing. Or birthday cake requirements, like Gary was talking about, you can see that, the things that are missing, things that we do have as options, more limited height, but again, there are a lot of 35-foot-high homes in Orem, if you drive around and look around, they're just not as offensive to the eye as the breadbox house. And you see, you know, you don't necessarily want to change that. Varied height requirements for roof styles, that might fall, fall afoul, actually. Varied allowances for numbers of stories based on roof styles, I'm not sure if that would or not, we could test that and see. Requirements for entry features, that might help more than you think, or different planes to mask, break up that mass. Requirements for offsets, like we just said, and then increase setbacks if you're gonna go over a certain height. We could reduce height, but tie that to setbacks instead. We would be allowed to do that. And that can make a difference, too. These last couple of things, so for example, this is a 35-foot home. There's a lot of height there, but it's all contained in that, it's contained in that pitch, but also there's more feature, and that takes your eye away from that big, flat front plane. So for example, this home here, while not 35 feet, has flat roofs, but there's more feature going on, and your eye is taken away from the height that you're looking at and the plain sort of front by just that simple door that says this is a house. It's drawn down to it by the color or whatever else, there's a lot of artsy-fartsy terms for it that we don't have time for today. But there are things we can do that might help with kind of the visual presence of homes that we haven't looked at in the past, because we, we don't generally need to. This is another home, it doesn't quite have that feature going on that takes away, so you see that height a little more. Just to give you the last bit on this, as you look at this home, what you need to realize, I think, or what we can, what helps me think about it, is that zoning, so what we told the planning commission the other night, zoning draws a box which, in which you can build a house. The thing is, most people don't fill that entire box up like they're pouring water into a, a glass box. But that's what happened here, that no one would have really anticipated or expected.
They wanted all the setbacks, but they built it as tall as they could.
Yeah, they're actually not quite, they're setback a little further than they would have had to have been because of an easement on one side. It could be a little bit bigger, could have been just a little bigger, but basically.
May I ask, what is the metric for measuring height? Is it the crown of the road? Is it the sidewalk?
Good question. So this, we, we can talk about that. Height is the vertical distance from the grade, this is our definition in our code, the vertical distance from the grade to the highest point of the structure, and we'd establish that grade by averaging between the four corners of the lot. So.
Can we, I think that's wrong. It should be based on the surrounding infrastructure.
We could change definitions and look at that kind of thing.
And that's, that's an avenue that we could look at, and it's difficult doing height, especially when you have a lot that maybe has a big slope in it, because how do you average that? And it's not as clear as it could be. This lot, however, is fairly flat, and any difference something like that would make to this lot would be negligible. It would be much more important in maybe hillside areas. And so we will look at that, and we're actually looking at our hillside ordinance, dealing with slopes and things that you can do with that right now anyway. And so we'll be putting that in. Just one last thing, quickly, the last two slides with those four homes, two homes on each, those are all homes in Orem.
And so Gary and Jared, there's, we're limited to some extent on what we can require. At the same time, we could, as a city, still propose sort of good neighbor, good neighborly sorts of things that that property on policy could consider, right? Like, not necessarily required. We could say, you know, look, if you'll consider different finishes, or different colors, or different, or adding a porch and stuff, then, then that would be a good neighborly thing for you to do. We could at least approach it that way.
Yeah, we, we could, we can always try that. Some people take it very well, and they're like, oh, wow, you know, I never thought of it, that's a great idea. I have had experience where I've tried to give my best to give a very friendly suggestion, tried not to be too, thou shalt do this, and they've taken offense at it. So while we try to do that, occasionally you may hear that, oh, staff was telling us what we can, what we should build and how my house should look, and, you know, at the end of the day, we can only regulate within the parameters of state law and our city code, but we frequently offer people suggestions on their projects.
Okay. All right, we're gonna have to keep going, but is there anything else you want to cover?
No, and just if there's any questions or you have a constituent has concern, please don't hesitate to contact me or Jared, and we are working and hoping, but again, I don't think there's an easy fix. I can't tell you, oh, there's, here's a really easy code amendment, well, it'll be to you in a month. It's gonna take a little bit of time to really think through this, make sure it works from a planning standpoint, and then work with legal to make sure we can do it under state law.
Is there any kind of outreach to the neighbors from the city? Or is there any plan?
There has, we've been talking about doing that. We haven't done it yet, and we wanted to, before we did anything like a general outreach to the community, we wanted to have this discussion with the council first. Though, in the meantime, we have talked to quite a few people about this and about the restrictions that we have.
As you guys work on this project, you should gather other homes that, you know, kind of have some issues, too. Remember that lady the other night? She was, I don't know if she reached out to you or not, but anyway, just gather other homes, and then you can have, you know, a dozen homes, whatever, you can say, okay, we're trying to figure out how to make this work for the community best.
Yeah, and now's the perfect time, if there's anything that people aren't liking, if our ordinances aren't giving us the result that we would want, now's the perfect time to go in and really dive into them and figure them out and get them right and make them closer. At the end of the day, though, you cannot legislate the case. That's almost impossible to do.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. All right, thank you. So you got 25 minutes left. We've got some food, just remember, let's go ahead and take care. Just a five-minute break, come back at 22, and we'll keep going, because we've still got more to go. Someone like that for a blessing on the food.
More than serious today. Lock is not Jake Gyllenhaal. He's about business.
He's into business.
No smiley Chris today. It's about business.
You gotta do it on the campaign.
Yeah, just to remind people. Just to remind people you can throw down.
We still need, we request, we had the money.
I don't know if you got carried.
I heard that.
We're in code 223. House members all, speaking on. Question 234, campaign finance disclosure.
Hey, Mayor. So Mayor, in council, our last city council meeting, our work session, there was some discussion about amending this section 2-3-4 relating to campaign finance disclosures. Part of this discussion, I think, was about doing a couple of things. Maybe either moving the current reporting requirement, which is due on June 30th, moving that to the end of the year, or possibly keeping that June 30th reporting requirement and adding in a second reporting requirement at the end of the year. So what I've done is I've prepared two possible options for you to consider. And.
Which one do you want to start with?
I think, I know we didn't give you a whole lot of notice to look at this. I think this was sent to you this afternoon.
Okay, so is that not working or?
Teresa. Okay. So let's do the other one, if you would, first. Teresa. Okay, so this is the first one. I guess you could call this the simpler version. We'll just call this option one. As you can see there, it's just basically changing the date that the reporting happens from June 30th to December 31st. And essentially, if you can scroll down a little bit, Teresa, the only other change that is just deleting this section four, which basically was something that was put in there in 2023 that had a reporting requirement that was specific to 2023 and is no longer applicable. So let's just get rid of that. So essentially, the effect of this is just, again, changing the reporting requirement from June 30th to December 31st.
Can you explain what that does?
What it does for you?
And what the benefit is to making changes?
Uh, you know, if I may, I think it means people that are leaving office, their sports seats up. It makes us accountable at the end of our term of election. And I think that's an easier solution than making you do it twice a year, because you probably aren't getting donations. But you know when a person's leaving their office, that they disclose what they've done or not done in campaign, as far as what they've done. To me, that makes the most sense out of my brief reading. I can't tell you, but an hour before I have. But that's what it takes it does.
Yeah, Stephen.
So was that part missed in the past?
Yeah, with June 30th and the night of zip.
Probably, yeah. I think the other thing it does, and we'll talk about this in regard to the second option a little bit too, is, you know, city council members who are running for reelection have some campaign finance disclosure requirements under state law. Right? So if you're involved in a primary, then you have to file a disclosure seven days before the primary date. And then if you're involved in a general election, you have another disclosure requirement prior to the general election. So, you know, if you throw in a June 30th requirement, then you've got another one that maybe you do around the first August, and another one that's due around October. You know, maybe it's a little much. Yeah, a little bit confusing. So there may be some advantage in that respect of just moving it to the end of the year. Uh, so the second option here, we can have Teresa put that up. So the second option basically keeps two reporting requirements. And it keeps the June 30th, 30th date, but it has kind of an exception for it if you're a city council member who's running for reelection. And again, if you're, if you're running for reelection, you're subject to these additional reporting requirements. So it would say that generally for city council members, you still file June 30th. But if you're running for reelection, then you file at the same time you require to file for your primary election. So you don't have to do it twice, essentially. So it does kind of create two different requirements based on whether you're running for reelection or not you're on. So again, most council, those who are not running for reelection would file on June 30th. Those who are running for reelection would file seven days before the primary, which is the requirement for it. The idea behind that is to make it, you know, if you're running for reelection, it puts you on sort of the same footing as the other people you're running against, in terms of when you have to file. So you're not, you know, maybe you could be put at a disadvantage if you have to file on June 30th and your people you're running against don't file until, you know, run office first or something like that. So that's kind of the intent of that requirement. And then what it does also adds a provision that, um, it basically says if you are, let's see. So, and then it also adds the December 31 requirement. So you have the two times you have to report. And then in subsection three there, basically, this is kind of to cover somebody whose term of office expires. So if your term of office ends in January of the given year, then you just file by January 15th of that year, disclosing all contributions and expenditures made or received up until the end of your term of office, which is usually a thing opposed to you in January.
Okay, so this one has a, if I'm not running for reelection, has a June and a December.
Correct, correct.
If I am running, I am, I'm on that other calendar with all the other candidates.
Correct.
But if they are running and they're reelected, do they have, and they are reelected, do they have December 31st?
Yes, yes.
So they have the extra one.
So, yeah, so everybody, everybody would still have two, you know, kind of in the middle of the summer and then at the end of the year. And then it does add an additional requirement for somebody who is a former elected official, you know, whose term just expired. Because the language right now, I mean, theoretically says, you know, it's a requirement for all elected officials. And this is kind of designed to also, you know, include former elected officials whose term expired and cover the entire time that they were in office.
So this, I think, adds more transparency for all of us as elected officials to have the two. I like this because it puts us to have to report twice. So even if we're not for reelection, we're still reporting every year. And then it kind of fixes that issue if we are running to just, it's kind of another month, I guess, whatever.
Yeah, it's probably usually be by an extra month, yeah.
It does complicate it.
Yeah, it's a little bit more complicated.
And which I'm not necessarily opposed to, but in the world of it, I'm just wondering how, how much extra we're creating for ourselves. So I would probably prefer some, but it depends.
I think you get full transparency at the end of the year.
Well, but the reason we put in the June date is in case there is anything, so that everybody's transparent before any election.
Oh, before the election.
But wouldn't that show up at the end of the year?
After the election. Is that what I mean?
So it's not transparent?
But they're not running for office either.
But they could donate money. They could receive money and donate it to a candidate in the election.
But that would show up on the candidate's forms.
Um, that's true, but how much money are they going to have received? And when, they could donate after the election to the candidate and then have it show up on the forms.
But after the election, it's something that's not 31st.
Right, but don't you want to know it before the election? Shouldn't people know about it before the election?
Probably is transparent if it has a donor donation. I mean, it's a paid duty statement in the June. We have to do another one again. Very weak, but that's one.
Wait, did you say that you're, you just told her that you're 30th and you're running in office six months?
So if you're, if you're a council member who's running for reelection, mayor, in that case, you would not file June 30th. You would only have to file seven days before the primary or, and again, before the general election.
It'd be instinct, call the other candidates, basically, as far as the reporting.
Correct.
Yeah, but let's, let's take your case, Mayor, for example. You're not, you're running for reelection as mayor, but you're not subject to a primary, right? So in that case, your date would still be June 30th. But if you're subject to a primary, then you have, then you don't have to file on June 30th. You just file at the same time everybody else files.
So with the different parable, that's where it comes to how it's going to be informed. Like, like the city reporter, somebody sends out the things and says, this is your situation. This is when you've got to report. And so it's pretty crystal clear. Otherwise, it's just pretty confusing.
Yeah, that, that piece of it is just to try and put, again, people who are running for reelection on the same footing as their people who are running.
So are you saying you put something in the code that says the reporter has to send out an email?
I would just.
Because I give you a way.
She does that anyway, right?
She does it anyway. We don't want to make it a crime.
My concern is that if somebody's running and they don't figure this out well, and then all of a sudden they're criminal. And so we just, it just seems to be pretty crystal clear.
It's, I don't think that's, it's that hard if you're running. So get your packet that has all the dates.
I mean, I think Teresa will absolutely tell you when to use your file. But.
Many times.
We have to allow the human element.
What happens? Like, if you finish your term, and somebody gets you money two months later, do you have to report that?
Well, I don't think they can give you a campaign contribution. They would just, I don't know how they would do that. Because you're not a political office holder and you're not running for office, so.
You just do your job.
Then it would just be you personally. It's not to you as a candidate or an office holder. So, so then I don't think there's any reporting, reporting requirements, because it's only, you know, these are campaign finance laws that don't apply to people that are not candidates or office owners. Then the IRS just wants to know about the nature they get.
So that you're not in office anymore? If you get something, I understand.
Then I think that's just a personal, yeah.
Okay, yeah, one drop off.
Yeah.
It's worth it for us.
Uh, so we have this, I guess, discussion on which option you prefer. And then we have the schedule for the regular meeting. And you could decide to select one of these two options or do nothing at all, or have a hybrid version, whatever you would like to do.
So I would like to bring up one other point. There, I'm wondering from you, Steve, how we, or if we can, regulate this. You know, I came across this Facebook group or post or whatever that talked about 501(c)(4)'s. They're a nonprofit organization that is set up and is often used to funnel what you call dark money for campaigns. So what that means is these groups set up a 501(c)(4). They don't have to report who the donors are into their supposed nonprofit. They do have to report who they give the money to. But you have no way of tracing that back to, there's no transparency there. So my question would be, from a municipal standpoint, is there a way that we can encourage or create some type of ordinance that would say, if you're going to donate, you know, to municipal candidates, or I don't even know, but to create that transparency for those organizations where we're not going to have situations where this dark money's coming into our elections?
I mean, that's, that's a good question. I don't know a lot about this, just to be totally honest with you. It's probably something we'd have to look into a little bit more and think about. Might be a challenge, because, you know, I'm assuming a 501(c)(4) is an IRS, is a section of the IRS code that allows for like a 501(c)(4) is an IRS code. And so I have to know, you know, what regulations the IRS has established to allow for this type of entity. And, you know, whether we can override some of those potentially or, from what I'm understanding then, so somebody makes, a 501(c)(4) makes a donation to a political candidate, that candidate has to report the name of that entity. Your concern is that we don't know who contributed the money to the, and I don't know how you would, how you would possibly, because if they're getting donations from a hundred different people, how would we know where those donations came from? I don't, I don't know. I don't have the answer to that.
Could we require a statement to be put on our reporting forums or someone's reporting forums that says something like this donation came from a 501(c)(4) that is not per whatever is not required to disclose who or who its original donor is that? Or something kind of identifying what, how a 501(c)(4) works? I just want, those are notorious for dark money in elections. So how do we be transparent and help our public understand what these finance papers are actually saying? If someone's getting money from a 501(c)(4), I read some articles, you know, 85% of the people believe that it's dark money. It's, there's, you know, out of state, out of country, who knows? So just the transparency would kind of, we can't, if we can, and I'd like to look at, if we can do something about our own ordinance to kind of qualify that. If we can't do that, then maybe there's some type of descriptive, informative statement that can be made for those particular, to identify those donations on our.
Yeah, there might be, if you wanted to do that, it might be, you might include in the reporting requirement, you have to identify that this is a 501(c)(4), for example. And, and yeah, if you wanted, you could put something on the forum that says, you know, whatever explanation you want to have about a 501(c)(4) is what it is. But yeah, that might be one possibility.
Most of the c4's are picks, not packs.
And we might be, you know, we could also maybe explore how other jurisdictions have dealt with that, that the people have tried to tackle that situation. See.
I'd kind of like to look into that. I'm just, I read, read a couple of articles when I heard about this a few weeks ago. I've read a couple of articles and it's, it's concerning. You know, I think if we are doing, if we're, if people are reporting, if we're doing through all this structure to report, you know, where's the influence coming? Who are the donations coming from? You know, that's to help our public understand and, and even from an election standpoint, to create this transparency. But if we're having this entity come into our community and donate, you know, go through this donation process, we're losing that transparency. And there should be, there should be a red flag for that. And people can judge for themselves what that means. So I think that's what I'd like to do, is maybe look into that, what ways that we can better help our public understand what that means.
I agree. I think that'd be great. Need more transparency, right?
Yeah, I mean, we can look, or we can explore some options online. Like, I said, do some research on the board of.
Jeff, Tom, Jen, woman, William.
No, I, I, I think it's all about transparency, letting people know what's happening and who's donating, so. I've never heard of that, I've never heard of that before, so this is all, and maybe you didn't know what other things you're doing, if others are concerned, or that's something that is an issue.
So it sounds like this is going to be continued, Mr. Mayor, is that right?
Well, that, this could be different.
We can start.
That's what we're talking about now.
Yeah.
Do we have a consensus on what we're thinking about, what we're talking about now? Yeah, I, I agree with one, I think you should pursue this and get a little deeper and come back to it, I'd say, but as far as these two options.
Are we looking to, I like us tonight.
It, it's on the agenda, in case you want to do that, so, like I said, your options, you could ask one of these versions, you could do nothing at all, you could continue it, or you could.
Doesn't anyone have strong feelings? You've got do nothing to option?
It's not on the consensus?
It's not on the consensus.
It's not. So we're not doing anything with necessarily tonight?
It's a regularly scheduled.
Oh, scheduled ordinance, I see, Steve, I'm sorry.
But we're voting on something, and then you want.
Or not? Or not?
My vote doesn't matter, I'm not going to vote for that one, it's December.
Once a year.
Here's the way.
Your vote matters just as much as everyone else's, though.
Well, if I were on the council, I'd vote for one, as I said. I just don't withstand some of the states that. I think it provides you with transparency, and maybe less paperwork.
I don't think it does, because we had donations, when we first did this ordinance, there were donations that were disclosed that would not have shown up but for this ordinance.
Would have been in December.
We didn't have the ordinance then.
Right, but once a year would have done it.
Right, but this was in a June. It could, it could have happened in June if it were in an election. See what I mean? It would have been important in an election, right?
I mean, I'm not, I'm not looking for more reports to do, and I have to tell you, every time I get the email from Teresa saying it's time for P T S D, I have to be quiet, because I'm afraid we'll miss the deadline somehow. But I, I'm fine either way, as long as Teresa will keep letting us know that we have this coming.
Well, it's multiple emails, like she said, so it's not like you can miss it. It's hard to miss it.
If you don't look at the email, you just turn it in and I'll stop emailing you. That's how it works.
I think, I think, I think a lot of, I mean, it really tried to be sort of transparent, let's just do, I mean, I think it's another form.
And mine is zero, right? I mean, it's usually zero, right?
Okay, so you want to, we're out of time. You want to just continue this discussion in the meeting out there? You presented again, we'll kind of talk for a better hour. All right. You know, we have time to go to these, and it's pretty simple.
I got the prayer and pledge. Yeah, and can you remember that Dan spoke at our Beckwood's program this last year? Dan and his son, Dan's giving the prayer, and his son Isaac is giving the I'll be happy to make a brief introduction.
I'll have you interview some. Okay, well, let's go ahead and adjourn this, Megan, move to the next one.
Mayor?
I'd like to call this meeting to order, and welcome everyone here tonight. We appreciate you coming out. We'll start out with an invocation from Dan Patterson, and then a pledge of allegiance from Isaac Patterson. These are friends of Tom's, and if you'd like to introduce him, Tom?
Well, they should be a friend of everyone. Uh, Dan is a recently retired from the Army as a Lieutenant Colonel, and Isaac is awaiting his mission call, so, Dan, you're up first.
And just push that on if it's not on. Test.
I just pray, our Father in Heaven, we thank Thee for this opportunity to gather together as a a city and leaders of the city, Father, we ask Thee for Thy blessings at this time upon the city and upon those who are in this room, who will be making decisions, and ask Thee to please bless them, and that their will may be along with Thy will. Father, we ask Thee to please bless this great city, and bless all those who are struggling and have needs, that their needs may be addressed in accordance with Thy will. Father, we ask Thee that we may be able to show our gratitude to Thee as well, we're so very grateful for this country and the freedoms that we have and the opportunity to celebrate that recently, and Father, we give Thee gratitude for all that we have, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Isaac, if you'd like to come do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 8.1. Actually, 8.1, we're not going to have that at this meeting. So we'll move on to item 8.2. We've got a presentation of a Babbel Scholarship recipient from Carrie Rug, our Deputy City Manager.
Does this work? Thank you, Mayor and Council, it should show recipients, because we have more than one Babbel Scholarship winner, but it is my pleasure to remind you about our scholarship program that we started in 2021. Since that time, with your support, the city has awarded 29 employees' scholarships. As a result of these scholarships, 14 of the previous awardees have been promoted within the city. This scholarship program is successful in opening doors for growth to those who may not otherwise have the opportunity to gain the formal education, and to be competitive for new opportunities within the city. Knowing how successful this scholarship program has been in previous years, I'm excited to share with you, this year is no exception. This year's awardees exemplify building a better Orem. I'm proud to present to you the 2025-2026 Babbel Scholarship awardees. As I call your name, if you're here, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the front, and Amy is going to give you the scholarship, and then after we have everybody up here, we will, we'll do a picture. So the first one is Jett Buxton. Jett started with the city six years ago as an engineering intern, and has since been promoted to a GIS analyst in the Public Works Department. He will use the scholarship to work towards his bachelor's degree in GIS. Tyler Pay. Tyler has worked for the city for 17 years, starting as a public works technician. Since that time, he has worked hard and promoted to Assistant Public Works Director. He will use this scholarship towards his master's in public administration. Brooke Williams. Brooke Williams has worked for the city for two years, starting out as a public work technician in the Parks Division, and has since been promoted to crew leader with the Public Works Department. She will use this scholarship towards her master's in public administration. Matthew Kemmerer. Matt works in the Library Department and was recently promoted to librarian. He will use this scholarship to pursue his master's degree in library science. Dalen Largin. Dalen is a police officer and has worked for the city for four years. He will use his scholarship towards a bachelor in emergency services. Erica Zog. Erica has worked for the city for a year and a half as a senior engineer in the Community Development Department. She will use the scholarship towards her master's in public administration. Luke Chatwin. Luke began working for the city as a teenager during the summer at the Seurat Pool in 2018, and now works in the Human Resources Division of the Management Services Department. He will be working towards his bachelor's degree. Holden Sanderson. Holden is a police officer and has worked for the city for two and a half years. Holden plans to use this scholarship towards his associate's degree. Gavin Johnson. Gavin was hired in 2019 as an intern in the Police Department. Since that time, Gavin has become a police officer. Gavin will use this scholarship towards his bachelor's in criminal justice. Jake Gould. Jake was hired as the IT Help Desk Supervisor in 2021, and has since promoted to the Systems Engineer in the Management Services Department. Jake will use this scholarship towards his master's in IT Management. Mariah Shirley. Mariah has worked for the city for three and a half years as the Recreation Fitness Center Manager. She is using the scholarship towards her bachelor's in Business Management. Katie Smith. Katie is the Executive Assistant to the Chief of Police and has worked for the city for five years. She plans to use the scholarship towards her bachelor's in Communications. David Monzo. David started with the city as a library page. He's also worked for 3-1-1, and currently works in the Management Services Department as an HR Generalist. He will use his scholarship towards his bachelor's degree in HR Management. Brandon Stevens. Brandon was recently promoted to a librarian and has worked for the city for three and a half years. He will use this scholarship towards his master's in library science. Please join me in congratulating our Babbel 2025-2026 Scholarship awardees.
One, two, three? All right, thanks. Congratulations, everyone, that's exciting. It's great to have employees that want to get their education furthered, and it's great to have a, a great city program that allows you to do that, so, congratulations. Jen?
And also, I'm super proud of you, because I know it's hard to go back to school at this point in your lives, but I'm so proud of you, and it was really fun to see so many of your faces up here, so good job, guys.
Okay, next up, we've got item 8.3, Presentation, City Recorder Received a Certified Municipal Clerk Certification. Carrie?
Okay, Teresa, come on up. Ladies, are you here for us too? Can you come up? Okay, so I am thrilled to announce that my good friend and our city recorder, the one and only Teresa McKittrick, has earned the prestigious designation of Certified Municipal Clerk, awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And I would like to turn, I don't know which one it is, Kim?
I'm Kim.
Kim. Kim Crane is here, she's part of the U M C A President, and also the Springville City Recorder, to say a few words about this.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a special time. We want to take this opportunity to recognize Teresa McKittrick, someone who has shown incredible dedication to her profession and to the community she serves. We're, we're here on behalf of the Utah Municipal Clerks Association in partnership with the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And our mission is simple but meaningful, to support our members through education, connection, and collaboration, to help them grow professionally and serve their communities in excellence. Our international organization offers two certification programs designed to strengthen and elevate the role of the municipal clerk. Here in Utah, we're proud to administer these programs through our association, and even more proud of our partnership with Southern Utah University, which provides the outstanding educational foundation behind them. So tonight, as we celebrate Teresa, she has officially earned her Certified Municipal Clerk designation. And although this title isn't small, it represents her commitment to hundreds of hours of professional development and a passion for serving her city well. To qualify, she had to actively work in a municipal role, performing the essential duties of a clerk recorder, and complete at least 120 hours of coursework to meet the certification requirements. This dedication doesn't happen overnight, and it's a long journey, and shows perseverance and pride in her work. So I'd like to thank Orem City Leadership, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, for supporting Teresa in her professional growth, and we have a little, just something to say, great job.
Mayor and Council, can I just briefly add that this also is evidence that Teresa is just a super doer beyond super doers, I mean, for her to be able to get this level of certification that's not easy to get, and get up to speed on being a recorder, and doing everything that she does, and, you know, elections now part of her, her duties in facilitating that, so, she is just exceptional, gets so much done, and is just great to work with, so, want to make sure you, you know that additional context.
Thank you, Bren. And we all know Teresa, and Teresa does a great job. You're doing an amazing job, thank you. Next up, we've got item 8.4, Best of State Orem Winners. Mayor, Parks and Rec, Mental Health Unit of a Police Department, and we're back to Carrie.
Back to me, it's the Carrie Show tonight. Okay, so, as the mayor just stated, we have three awards that we want to share with you. It's my distinct pleasure to stand before you today and celebrate the exceptional achievements that have earned these individuals and teams the prestigious Best of State Award. Their dedication, innovation, and unwavering commitment to excellence has truly set them apart. First, we'd like to recognize and congratulate Mayor Dave Young, the Best of State winner for Mayor. This year, Mayor Young was nominated by a group of Orem residents, completely independent of city staff, a testament to the deep respect and admiration he has earned within the community. Mayor Young is quick to acknowledge that this award wouldn't have been possible without the extraordinary efforts of our city staff. Their high-level operations and the incredible number of significant accomplishments achieved last year and this year have been truly remarkable. Compared to our peers, Orem has been absolutely knocking it out of the park, and that is a direct reflection of the leadership and collaboration fostered by Mayor Young and his dedicated team. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, the next Best of State Award is for our Police Department's Mental Health Unit, so if you'll come on up. While they're coming up, I'll read a little bit about that. They've been recognized as a Best of State winner, and they are humbled and deeply appreciative of the foundational efforts of those who have paved the way for their current successes. The Police Department understands the necessity to have specialized training and response to help assist the increasing daily interactions and demand that police officers have with those displaying mental illness in the community. The journey of this vital unit began in 2016, when Jeremy Jamison initiated it as a part-time position, which evolved into a full-time assignment in 2017. We want to acknowledge the remarkable individuals who have shaped this unit. Jeremy Jamison, John Savage, who is now retired, Andrew Wright from the FBI, Annalise Langs, Raymond Vitelli, David Hamel, Cameron Wilson, and our current dedicated interns, Mary Rodriguez and Anna Rogers from BYU, and Erica Bunker from UVU. The Mental Health Unit also extends its heartfelt gratitude to the organizations that have provided invaluable support. Wasatch Behavioral Health, Aspen Grove Behavioral Health, Utah Valley University College of Humanities and Social Sciences, and Brigham Young University. If I can turn my page. Bachelors and Masters of Social Work Programs. Their collaborative spirit has been instrumental in the unit's success. Congratulations. If you guys will just stay up here, we'll get a photo at the end. I'd like to invite the Parks Division and the Recreation Department to come on up as we finally celebrate the outstanding work of the city's Park Division and Recreation Department. Over the past few years, the combined efforts of the Orem Recreation Department and the Orem Public Works Department to expand parks and recreation amenities in our city have been driven by a singular goal, to enhance the quality of life for all citizens in Utah. While Orem residents are a significant part of those who enjoy our parks and amenities, the great sports tournaments, parks facilities, and diverse programs our Orem City offers draw countless visitors to our city. They come to enjoy time in nature and recreate with their loved ones, bringing vibrancy and economic activity to our community. and economic activity to our community. A shining example of how we've improved the quality of life is our altogether playground. As the first all-abilities playground in Utah County, it has opened up an invaluable opportunity for children with disabilities to play alongside other kids, fostering inclusivity and joy for everyone. Our robust sports programs are also vital in getting kids and adults active and healthy and socializing. These programs significantly improve their physical and mental well-being and contribute to a higher quality of life for everyone involved. Congratulations, our Parks Division and our Recreation Department. Okay, so I'd like to get a photo of all of our winners. Mayor, I don't know if you want to stand up there or come down with the rest of the group.
So can I also add Hoku onto that recognition? Police officers, do you guys, you want to show us your cute little dog? I saw Hoku at the police picnic, and I've heard some amazing stories. It's a she, right? Isn't she? Okay. Yeah.
She's not normally mine, I will say. She's usually with Rob, one of our SROs. I'm babysitting for the week, so I deserve no credit. She's very sweet, very fun, very tired, and very hot.
Come a little closer, I want them to see her on the camera here. Oh, is that not on?
Where do you want?
Right. Come closer to the mayor and turn around and let show everybody our cute Hoku here. Thanks.
We'll now move on to item number nine, Personal Appearances. And we have five individuals that would like to show their ideas with us. I will start out with Madison Palika.
This is good. Okay. Hi, I'm Maddie Palika. Thank you for hearing me. We are selling the soul of our city to progress. Do we care more about keeping up with the world or the health and well-being of our very soul? I have called Orem River Bottoms home since I was five years old, and back then, life here was slow, safe, family-oriented, and stunningly beautiful. I remember coming to this very intersection and stopping not just for traffic, but to gaze up at Mount Tipinogus. It wasn't just scenery, it was a symbol of what was grounded, unshakable, and steady, and it was a reminder to look up and be still and remember what truly matters. And now, it's blocked by this very building, and I think it's a real-life picture of what's happening here. The city is building over the very things that once made this place sacred. This genuinely makes my heart ache, especially now as a young woman thinking about my future, about family, and about what kind of life I want to raise my children in. I don't want to leave behind what I know and love, but sometimes I wonder, is this even the same place that I knew and loved? The streets are more crowded than ever, yet our population is declining. We're not becoming more rooted, we're becoming more rushed. People are not moving in to stay, they're only passing through, and our neighborhoods are filling up with high turnover, high-density housing, and cheap construction that's barely livable, let alone lovable. Many of the older family homes that are left are rundown and look more like hoarder houses than places where kids could safely ride their bikes or build a life. This does not look like a city that's thriving, it looks like a city being hollowed out from the inside. They'll say, if you're not growing, you're dying, but I believe the growth we're seeing is the death, the death of beauty, the death of peace, and the death of a life actually worth living in. If we keep chasing growth at all costs, we risk losing that calm, beautiful, community-oriented life and the very soul of this place. This is a heart matter, a spiritual matter, and a generational matter, and this is my plea. Orem is at a crossroads, and if we don't make the right change of heart now, I fear that it'll be too late. It feels like a moment in time where we get to choose the trajectory of this once-amazing city, so let's build a future that our children can actually live in and not just pass through. Let's return to the soul of this city before it's too far gone, and let's stand for something while there's something still worth standing on.
Thank you. Next up, PJ Eager.
Hi, my name's PJ Eager. I'm here from the Geneva Heights neighborhood, which is a historic neighborhood in Orem. One, to say thank you for fixing our street to the Public Works Department, they're pretty awesome. My neighbors have been living there for 40 years, and they've been waiting 20 years to have our road and our sidewalks fixed, and I'm really grateful that it happened and they did a great job. And our road was a little bit crazy for a couple months, but it was totally worth it. Two, also to say thank you for the My Hometown Project and the city's support of that. That's happening in my neighborhood and it's made a big difference, and I really appreciate it. And then, three, I'm still wondering, I don't know if you guys know, I know you can't answer questions right now, but what's going on with short-term rentals in Orem? My neighborhood is filled with houses from the 1940s and 50s, and they're some of the most affordable homes in Orem, but that also means they're much more likely to be snatched up by an investor. Statistically across the US, one in four homes in an area that are in the most affordable bracket are going to be picked up by an investor. And so we're seeing a lot more of that in my neighborhood, and a lot more Airbnbs, and with the Olympics approaching, we're a little bit worried that it's just going to keep turning over and over and over. So if there's any information, if you can point me in any direction, I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you. Next up, Ashton Jensen.
Good evening, City Council. First, thank you to the Parks Department. Orem has some of the best parks. We're very close to Northridge and love the Pickleoff Courts and the tennis court that just went in. I and a few friends and neighbors drafted a letter that I will be sending each of you after this, but I wanted to read you most of that letter and then let you know that we're going to be collecting some signatures, people of Orem who agree with thoughts on this letter between now and the next City Council meeting, and then we'll send you all those signatures after the fact. I want to bring up the issue of housing affordability in Orem. Everybody's heard about the housing crisis. The average home in Utah, and Orem is no exception, is far out of the reach of the average family. Orem is aging, but young families are not able to move in. As a result of skyrocketing home prices, many longtime Orem residents are realizing that their kids or their grandkids will not be able to afford to live near them. So whether or not you're pleased with rising home prices and property values, it's quickly going to negatively affect somebody close to you. We're concerned about software developers and fast food workers, private equity managers and teachers, but it needs to create the conditions to provide housing for them all. While we understand that the city does not set prices, we're concerned that Family City USA is not creating the conditions to allow for home rental prices for those families who would like to live here. Just a few quick examples of housing that do work and don't work in Orem. Number one, the Browns have lived in the same house for 30-plus years and were able to convert their basement into a rentable apartment. They have little to no retirement savings and depend on the apartment's rent month to month. They love living in Orem and want to stay here, and the ability to rent out space they no longer use is a blessing for their financial stability, and it's great for their renters. Contrast that with Audrey, who has worked from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. every evening in fast food for the last few years after her husband works all day painting just to afford to rent a small two-bedroom apartment for her family of four. Is she not working hard enough? Is that why her family has to commit two share of their income for a very small apartment? So what we propose is that we allow homeowners to use, empower them to use their free space. Many would love to make extra money by renting out unused space but encounter a burdensome and confusing permitting process, or no ability to build backyard cottages or ADUs even if they have the space. So we propose that City Council consider any or all of these policy changes. Number one, permit backyard cottages and ADUs in residential zones. Number two, legalize starter homes everywhere and decrease minimum lot size to allow for building smaller, more affordable homes. Allow single-family homes to convert into duplexes and then streamline the approval process. And two benefits, really, we think that everybody with a stronger, with greater financial stability for homeowners and controlling that incremental development and providing more options for everybody. So I'll send you this after this meeting, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not sure I can read this. I'm guessing it says Chuk Sisson?
Chuck.
Chuck, okay, Chuck.
I'd like to take this opportunity to say good evening to the mayor and the City Council and the residents of Orem. I'm here to voice concerns about the neighborhood improvement team's code enforcement practices, particularly in low and moderate-income neighborhoods like Orem North, Geneva Heights, Sharon Park, Stonewood, Lakewood, and Cherry Hill. The CDBG Code Enforcement Plan outlines NIT's goal of promoting safe neighborhoods through compassionate enforcement and voluntary compliance. While I appreciate the initiatives like the Critical Home Repair Program, my personal experiences suggest the NIT approach often feels punitive and lacks clear communication undermining these goals. I'd like to relate to you a personal experience. I received multiple notices from different NIT officers, each citing different violations. I wrote letters to the city and left voicemail messages for the officers, but I received no response. In fact, I was ghosted. Then I was summoned to court, requiring me to take time off from work. The court's location was not clear, and it caused me to be late. Only then did I learn one of the citations had been canceled. There was no explanation of when or how it was canceled. The judge refused to answer my questions when I said, who did it and did they ever notify me? Eventually, they fined me nearly $200. This felt unfair, given the lack of communication. More recently, a family member received a letter on June 16th of 2025. The letter demanded repairs to be performed by June 17th of 2025, a one-day window during a heat wave. This unrealistic deadline, coupled with a threatened $50-a-day fine, felt like a setup for failure, especially considering the health risks like heat stroke. In June, we received multiple notices like these, not counting the letter that we received, which conveniently was not dated by the city. A friend of mine...
I'm sorry, your three minutes is up?
Oh, my apologies. You're right. Thank you.
Okay. Brendan, is there somebody at the city that he could talk to to address his concerns?
Yeah, we've got Assistant Chief here.
So if you'd like to go talk to the Assistant Chief and, you know, go through the issues that you've got, that'd be great. Thank you for coming. Last up, we've got Evan Thacker.
Hello, Marianne and City Council. Thanks for hosting the meeting and thanks for having us all here today. Just want to express some gratitude for a great improvement that's occurred on my street just today. As you probably know, there are crews out doing asphalt refinishing on the roads, and it's awesome for my street, really good. It really improves how the street looks, and I'm sure it's going to improve how that street functions for a long time, so thank you. And I'm guessing it's probably Public Works Department that runs that stuff, so I'm grateful to the people who make the decisions and figure out the budgets and hire the contractors and get all that stuff done. Really great improvement for our neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for your comments. We'll now move to item number 10, Consent Items. On the consent items, we've got item 10.1, Approval of the Meeting Minutes for May 27th, 2025. Item 10.2, Mayor Pro Tem for July 2025 to December 2025 will be Jen Gell, replacing Lene Millot. Thank you for your service. And next, we've got item 10.3, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Sign the First Amendment to Interlocal Agreement 2022-286 between Utah County, Utah and Orem City for the 1600-North 400 East Project. Someone like to make a motion on those items?
Mayor, I'm of that we approve the consent items.
Suck it. Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The consent items passed. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Schedule Items. We've got item 11.1, An Ordinance Amending Section 2-3-4 of the Orem City Code Campaign Finance Disclosures. And Steve, if you'd like to present that to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this, we're talking about potential modifications to Section 2-3-4 of our city code's campaign finance disclosure ordinance. We have before you two possibilities. We discussed these a little bit in the pre-meeting, but we'll talk about them a little bit now. Again, the first option is a relatively simple modification. Currently, the ordinance requires all City Council members, all elected officials, to file an annual campaign finance statement no later than June 30th of each year while in office. And one of the proposals is to move that, the first proposal would move that date from June 30th to December 31st, and would also strike some language in subsection B4 that relates to a specific filing requirement dating to 2023, which is no longer applicable. But again, the primary substantive change of this first option is just changing the annual reporting date from June 30th to December 31st. The second option would keep...
So Steve, just to interject, so you'd be moving it from June 30th to December 31st?
Correct.
So does it currently just pick up six months with what it's at right now? Or is it going from the previous calendar?
Well, it would basically, the way it reads right now, it covers everything that hasn't already been previously reported.
Steve, I think the mayor's question, it's currently on a fiscal year from July 1st to June 30th. And this would make it January 1st to December 31st, except for this short year.
Yeah, I think that's essentially correct.
So what I'm trying to understand is by moving to December 31st, does that make it an 18-month reporting period?
No, no, because it would just make it from December 31st, well, essentially, because when you, if you were reporting on December 31st, you would be reporting everything up until December 15th. And so basically, you'd be covering a whole year, but you would just be changing that one-year reporting period from basically June 30th to December 31st.
So you're still getting the same amount of time?
You're still getting, you're still covering the whole year.
Shifting it, okay.
Maybe the key difference is that it picks up that last six months for someone who's leaving office in January. It captures that, is that the goal?
Yeah, that's one of the purposes, one of the advantages of potentially doing it in December as opposed to in June, yes. Okay? Any other questions on the first option? Okay, so the second option is a little bit more complex. Okay, so the second option is a little bit more complex. It keeps the June 30 reporting date, but it also modifies that date for council members or elected officials who are running for reelection and who will be participating in a primary election. So right now, any candidate that is participating in a primary has to file a campaign disclosure statement six, or, sorry, seven days before the primary. So typically, the primary is in the first part of August, and so normally, that means that that particular statement would be due around the 1st of August or the end of July. And so, you know, that might, if a council member who's running for reelection has to file on June 30, and the people that they're running against don't have to file until the end of July or early August, that could potentially create a little bit of a disadvantage for the council member. So the proposal would be to, for those council members or mayor who's running for reelection, their filing date would not be June 30, but we would rather be seven days before the primary election, which would be the same date that every, all the other candidates have to file. So it'd make that date the same for them. And then it would also add another filing time for December 31, so there would be, this proposal would require two filing dates as opposed to just one filing date in the current ordinance. And lastly, the second proposal in subsection B3 contains a provision that an elected official whose term ends in January of a given year would file a campaign statement no later than January 15 of that year that would disclose all contributions received and expenditures made up until the date of that elected official's term of office. So that might actually cover, you know, up until January 4 or January 3, whatever that date might happen to be. So any questions about option two? So basically, you have these two possible options before you, so your choices tonight would be to either leave things the way they are, you could approve option one, approve option two, or approve some variation on either of those two options.
And explain how things are currently without any changes.
So the way things are right now, without any changes, is every elected official has to file this annual campaign finance disclosure statement on or before June 30 of every year.
And is there a reason for that? Is that, is that to stay in line with our fiscal year, or is that something to do with--
You know, I'm not entirely sure why that particular date was chosen. I suspect that it was to align with the end of the fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think there'd be a door number three that we haven't discussed, and that's anyone who's leaving office needs to fill one out for the six-month. If any of us aren't, don't win reelection on our election year, they'd still file June 30, and as they're leaving office, they'd file one on December 31.
That would certainly be an option as well. So that would essentially be taking that subsection B3 from what's option two and adding it to option one, is I think what you're--
Yeah, I think so, Steve. Thank you.
So does option two already cover that?
Option two does include that already, yes, but option one does not.
Okay. And Mayor, if I'm remembering our discussion we had back in 2023, I think part of the reason, there were two reasons why we picked that June deadline. We wanted something in June because it's typically the month where the election season begins. Every other year, we have an election season, so I think we wanted to have some transparency from all of the council members, just starting fresh with that. I think we kind of found out that with it, you know, the change to make it align with the candidate filing dates would create a more, an easier process for people who are, which would be incumbents who are running again. And then also for the fiscal year ending in June, I think we were kind of playing around with both of those, but my recollection is it was tried to, so everything was transparent in case there were an election. And then, of course, the off-years when there isn't an election, there was also an opportunity for transparency in case there had been some additional donations made after the final disclosures of the election the year prior. That's my reminder, recollection from 2023. I don't know if you want discussion, or do you want a motion first and then discussion? How do you want to do this?
Well, I think we should just chat about this for a minute. We, I mean, we talked about it in the work meeting. Let's just kind of talk about it a little bit more and try and come to some kind of consensus of what we think makes the most sense.
My point is, I think the more transparency, the better, and I think option two is the one that gives more transparency to the citizens and to everybody else, so.
Let me ask, as far as option two, does that move the date from June 30? Are we still, is that still the same as it is now?
It keeps the date at June 30 for everyone who's not running for reelection.
So it's the same as it is right now?
Yes. But also adds the December 31 filing requirement, so it adds an additional filing requirement.
So it picks up that issue?
Yes.
And then it also gets the, whoever's running in sync with the other candidates as far as their disclosures, right?
Correct.
So that kind of, it's a little bit more complicated, but it seems like it covers everything.
Yeah, that's what I think. I think it covers, it kind of takes into account every situation, and like Dave said, Dave Spencer lends to transparency on our part as elected officials and candidates.
Say something. So I think transparency is the goal here, and I think any one of those solutions probably provides for transparency. I personally would prefer the simpler option just because it reduces administrative burden on both staff and council. And then maybe with Tom's suggestion that we get outgoing people, you know, they have to fill something out before they go, but I could support any of them. That would just be my personal preference.
I will say this whole idea of getting, because I'm running now, so I'm experiencing this, but the idea of I file something on June 30, and then I'm not sure if I need to file this out or that, but if I'm aligned with the other candidates who are running as far as their dates, that seems like a plus to me. This just puts everyone on even playing field.
And that actually does simplify it for candidates, right? Because we don't have to file twice, which we had to do this year. We had to file the June 30, and then we're going to have to file again seven days before the election. And, oh, the other point I was going to make is typically, as an elected official not involved in an election, my forms have been zero. I have, I don't receive donations when I'm not running as a candidate. In years that are not election years, I don't know why I would be soliciting donations or receiving donations. So I think if that's happening, that's what this other reporting period does. It takes it in June, and then, of course, there's the December one to kind of make sure we get outgoing people and just kind of button it all up.
Then I would agree with that. I think it's important to be able to see where campaign donations are coming from throughout our entire time while we're serving in the City Council. I agree with Jen. I'm not looking for another form to fill out, but I, I could wholeheartedly support option two, especially, as I mentioned earlier in our meeting before, with our newly certified municipal clerk, certified city recorder, Teresa McKittrick. If, if she would be so kind, as she has done such a great job of just making sure that we know when and where we need to have those papers filled in and turned in, I could support that.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to make one more comment before we vote, unless there's something else. I just want to make a comment of something we discussed in the work meeting, something that I'm also learning about from transparency in, in elections and in donations. The last little while, I've become aware of a, kind of a workaround way to decrease transparency, and that is this setting up an entity called a 501(c)(4), which is a nonprofit. And the problem is, the 501(c)(4) does not require them to report who donates, to them, where the money comes from. They do, they do need to report if they donate to a candidate, to a political entity, but they call that dark money, and there are, you know, just real concerns coming up about this, this dark money. If you have a 501(c)(4), it eliminates transparency and accountability, and they're finding that many of the ads are funded, that are funded by dark money are more likely to be negative and to attack opponents, which we don't need more vitriol in our elections. I think we're all trying to strive for more civility in our processes. So I've kind of asked if we can maybe look into ways to, on the municipal level, in some other type of legislation, to kind of provide more transparency there on reporting forms for candidates. If they're receiving money from a 501(c)(4), then there needs to be some type of disclosure as to what that entity is, or maybe if we can require that entity to disclose where their money's coming from that is being directed to this candidate. Just some thoughts out there for some additional opportunities that we can consider for transparency, I would say, in the near future.
A thought on that as well, Lene, I don't think any of us would want to accept money from, I don't think any of us would want dark money, and so to have the opportunity to know, to be able to identify that beforehand would be very helpful, so that we could say thanks, but no thanks. I don't want that money as part of my campaign. So Mayor, I can make a motion. The City Council by ordinance amending Section 2-3-4 of the Orem City Code Campaign Financial Disclosures, number two, option, second option.
I'll second that.
Aye.
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 The ordinance is approved. Okay, thank you, Steve. And if you're looking to that with the dark money, we'll talk more about that later. All right, last up, we've got Brendan, your City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just two quick items. One, you'll, you'll see us doing more communication outreach and coordination with the Central Utah Water Conservancy District and the Alpine Aqueduct project they're doing as that, as they hit certain milestones, and particularly as those milestones result in potential increased concerns or questions from the public, then we want to get that information out. A particular note, they will be closing off 1560 East between 800 North and all the way north there, starting today through Friday, and so there'll be some inconvenience for the businesses and residents around there during that closing. And then another item that we expect to hear, you know, potential concerns or question from the public will be in, will start in late July and go for a couple months into the fall, will be some blasting operations, so it'll be away from the homes, but they're doing some tunneling as part of the project, and so, and they'll, they'll do some warnings that'll have some horns and things to, to make the public aware, and safety is, of course, top priority, but that will be, I mean, it's a major project, and I'm sure will be of heightened concern. So just so you know, we, we will be ramping up those types of communications. In positive note, today, one of the shows of appreciation and recognition that we engaged in was with our Parks and Recreation, and I just wanted to add my kudos to, to these groups. Just in the month of July alone, yesterday, we opened up Northridge Park and added pickleball courts and playgrounds and tennis courts there. Earlier this month, we had the Windsor Jazz Court that was added to Windsor Park. We had Orem Fest that was at multiple park locations and record-breaking attendance. On July 3 and July 4, we had 15,000 people go through the Colonial Fest event, and that's, Orem doesn't often get credit for our participation in, in the American Freedom Festival, but that is, you know, a well-attended and important part of that whole celebration. And then finally, last week, our summer concert series started, and this includes live music every Wednesday in, in conjunction with a farmer's market, and we get around 10,000 people going through the park every Wednesday as part of that. And a particular note, the Orem Fest, Orem's Got Talent winners, which was a group of Orem High Band Kids, they are going to be performing tomorrow as, as kind of the second act of that series. So it's just wonderful to see that there is a tremendous amount of work that goes on behind the scenes by our Parks and Recreation. I'm so glad that they're getting recognition, you know, outside the city, amongst the state, amongst their peers, but they're also getting it from me, and I know from you, and so just want to publicly thank them for their tremendous work. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. And I'll just add to that, Bryce, that is amazing what's going on with Parks and Rec. I mean, it's, when you, when you were awarded that Best Estate Award, you were competing against a number of different cities with some really good projects in Orem, Forum One, so that was awesome. You guys are doing a great job. And with that, unless anyone's got anything else?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we adjourn this meeting, Mayor.
Aye, second.
Aye.
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 Aye.